Call the meeting to order. If we could stand for pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
That's the weather warning.
So, looking at the agenda, we have three items for discussion and subsequent action. If it pleases the committee, I'd like to put the budget last so that, you know, we have some folks here for items two and three, at least not here, but also possibly at home waiting for that reentry presentation. So I thought we would kind of do those at the front end and do the budget last if that's okay. So I would entertain a motion to basically go in order of two, three, one.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Chonis. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Boashane. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so. We will start with item two. I'm sorry, Mr. Craig. Oh. I'm sorry.
I'll share with you, but I don't think so. Why we need one? You sure?
Okay, so the next item is discussion items, starting with the reentry plan.
Item two.
Item two, bid protest from Mill City Construction.
And we have, I don't know who from, a gentleman from Mill City, and if we can have a representative from school department just kind of frame this so that we know what we're hearing and then we'll let folks from Mill City.
Absolutely. As you're aware, so we had an RFP that went out for the entrance projects for Silver Spring and Hennessy Elementary Schools. We had awarded that to a vendor that was not the low bid RFP that came in. And so Mill City Construction, who was the low bid vendor for the project, did not agree with that and so is here tonight and would like to be heard with their appeal as to why they should have the project.
Okay. So I don't know if, I know I saw both gentlemen, and you both walk up to, you go right to that podium, sir, where the microphone is, please. Thank you.
My name is Steve from Mill City Construction. We were, on July 28th, we were told that we were not selected the low bidder of the project. We asked why, and they said it was relevance to experience and WBE participation. We went and reviewed all of the RFP, and there is no wording in there about WBE participation. They took 15 points off of our criteria score for something that wasn't even requested in the RFP. I don't feel that that is valid. They also took five points off for our references, which the following day we were, we were told, I don't even know if our references were even called, but I don't understand how you can take off points for something that didn't even ask in the RFP. You look through the criteria, it's not even mentioned once. They take off seven points off of the second low bidder for being $70,000 less than us, and they take off seven points. They take off 15 points for something that's not even in the RFP, and I don't understand why.
And that, the, that you're referring to MWBE?
I'm sorry.
The MWBE was a portion that you said was?
It's not in the, it's not in the evaluation.
But that's what showed the fif, that's what you're referring to, the 15 point?
Yes.
Okay.
It also asked for a schedule, which at the pre-construction meeting, it was brought up that because of COVID-19, we cannot provide a schedule at this time because of the lead time items, and everyone knows who's ever bought anything to try to get it. You can order it, but whether it comes in or not, you're, you're under their, their, when they, when they want to send it, and there's nothing you can do about it. So I don't know why, why we were overlooked, and I need to know, I need to know. I think that the finance committee for the town of East Providence, $70,000 is a lot of money. I, I don't know why it says in there that East Providence School Committee can eliminate whatever, whatever parts they want to on the, on the RFP to suit their purpose, but I, I figured that being $70,000 lower is enough to have you be the low bidder. It's hard enough to be the low bidder than to get looked over because of a schedule and a, and a WBE participation, which on some jobs, we have 40%, some jobs, we have 60% of MBEs. It's not something that people ask before the bid usually. I know it's in the specs. I know it's in the specs that it says that it has to go with the bid, but it doesn't say in the RFP, it doesn't say that it needed to be in there and it wasn't getting evaluated on. So that's what I got to say, and I'm hoping that you change your mind and think about the $70,000 that you're giving up for the second low bidder. That's all I got.
Thank you. Oh, I don't know who, if Craig gained on. Yes, please.
We have Joe Spokus with us tonight, who's an engineer from Jensen Hughes, who helped with the development of the, of the RFP and helped run the process.
Thank you, Craig. Just going to give a brief background on the project process and then a little bit of an overview on the evaluation criteria and review of the bids. So the project for Silver Spring and Hennessy Elementary Schools was posted on June 29th. Went through normal pre-bid conference, R5 questions and answers. Project bids were publicly opened on July 13th on the third floor of this building and reviewed immediately following the public opening with Craig and myself. Directly in the solicitation, there is evaluation criteria for how the bids will be reviewed, and there are three main components. Relevant experience, which is, consists of the experience, qualification, and compliance with the bidding requirements, references, and then cost. So those are broken up into 30-point, 30-point, and 40-point respectively grades, and that was what was used to evaluate each of the bids submitted on July 13th. So as we went through the bids, we went through, made sure all of the contents were met and all the information was received as outlined in the solicitation and specs that was part of the bid package. When reviewing Mill City's bid, we observed that they did not provide a complete minority and women business-owned participation and utilization plan. Because of that, at that point, we could have rejected the bid completely right there, but considering they were low bid, we continued with the evaluation to see where they would fall. We continued the evaluation criteria review through based on the experience, project experience and qualifications compared to the other contractors. One of the other contractors had five secured entrance projects throughout Rhode Island, which was above and beyond all of the other contractors, which kind of set the, set the stage for qualification standpoint. And going through the evaluation process, we then ranked out using that scoring system and metric, each of the, each of the bidders, and based on that bid results, Mill City was not the highest bidder and therefore was not deemed our suggestion to award the, award the project to.
You mean highest score?
Highest score. And I can give a breakdown of the scores too, if you would find that helpful.
Yeah, do you have, I know you just kind of ran through a few different things.
Yes. So, one second. So out of the, there were, out of the three bidders, Martone Service Company received a score of 92.7 points out of 100. Mill City received a score of 80 points out of 100, and Marion Construction received a score of 83.5 points out of 100. And taking into account all the evaluation criteria and the information that was part of each firm's submission, that's what drove the evaluation criteria and their evaluation.
And can you just speak to, I know, Steve, I'm sorry, you didn't say your last name, so I don't mean to call you by your fir, I don't mean to call you by your first name, that's fine. Okay. I know Steve had made reference to, you know, the MWBE, and I think you kind of spoke to that, but maybe.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit more detail.
Where it was listed, one, and whether it was clearly going to be a criteria or not.
So as part of the, the bid solicitation, there's project specs that are accompanied with it, which goes through things between procurement and contracting, general requirements, materials specifications, things of that nature. So within that table of contents and within that specs package, which is part of the bid documents, there is reference to the actual solicitation itself, which goes through information regards to timeline and when the pre-bid meeting is going to be, general requirements for the project. That's where it also talks through the evaluation criteria for the bids, things we're looking for as a project team for references, things of that nature. In there, there is a section which outlines proposal content and organization, which gives a overview of what is anticipated for the bid submission by the contractor. It also states in this specification document that all the specs need to be reviewed and followed. The spec immediately following the solicitation is the minority in women business enterprise documentation, which references, and this is directly from it, attached is the MBE, WBE, and disability business enterprise participation form. Bidders are required to complete, sign, and submit with their overall proposal in a sealed envelope. Please complete separate forms for each MBE, WBE, and/or disability business enterprise subcontractor supplier to be utilized on the solicitation.
Yeah, just, just step up there, please.
Can he read what it asks for in the criteria on the relevance? Because it doesn't ask for the WBE in that relevance. It doesn't mention it, it doesn't state it anywhere that they're going to evaluate under the WBE. It does not mention it. I don't see how we can be, now, we have WBE on the project. We can provide that to you with no problem, we can provide a schedule, but the schedule's only going to be as good as what the manufacturers tell us at the time of the bid, but it's not, it, it's very hard to do schedules at this time. But it doesn't say anywhere, he's reading what it says after the RFP, so there's a request for proposal, and it tells you exactly what they want for the request for proposal, and it doesn't say anything about MBE in there.
How would?
Yeah, just.
So I can, I can read through what's in the proposal evaluation criteria, but everything is submitted as one entire specification, so if you just read this one solicitation and you don't take into account all of the other specifications, how are you going to know what?
What's in all the other specifications? We have WBEs on the project, but it didn't ask for it at the request for proposal.
It's part of the whole bid package and submission. It's part of the specifications and project specs that is part of what needs to be submitted.
So you're going to ask me if we have the front entrance?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So any questions from the?
I have a question. Did, did everyone else include?
Yes.
What? What was omitted here?
Yep. The other two bidders also included the completed MBWBE form and the attached form appendix identifying the other contractors and subcontractors and their percentage that they were intending to use them on the job.
Did the other bidders omit any information at all?
No. One other bidder did exclude the project schedule, but none, none of the other bidders excluded the MBWBE requirements.
Through the chair. In general practice, is that how it's usually interpreted, that it's, the whole package is, is being interpreted, that this is everything you need to submit for the initial proposal?
Yes. When we review the specifications, I mean, when we review the bid documents, we review them to the bid specifications that are provided.
And that's not just us. What we tend to do usually, that's what usually does anyone else in?
Correct. There might be some instances where that information might not follow, but I, on 95% of the jobs I am part of and as part of this bid support, we receive that MBWBE participation component as part of the bid, so we can understand what percentage of the work will be subbed out to those minority and women-owned businesses, so we can factor that into the award of the project to meet that criteria, which is Rhode Island general law.
Any other questions from any other members? The, the scores, you had read the scores, what were the, the scores again for the respondent?
Yep. So Martone Service Company received 92.7 out of 100 points. They received 30 points for their relevant experience, 30 points for the references, and then they got deduced based off of their cost. They were about, they got to do 7.3 points for that, based on their costs compared to the low bid, which was Mill City. The other firm, Marion Construction, go with them next. They received 25 points for relevant experience and the qualifications and compliance. They did not receive, they did not provide a proposed project schedule as part of the submission. They were deducted five points on the reference section based on lack of supplemental project reference information provided. So they provided a list of four names with no relevant information regarding to what projects were associated with those references, so they were, received a five-point reduction for that, and then they also received a reduction based on their costs compared to the low bid. Mill City Construction, when reviewed theirs, they did not have the MWBE participation form and utilization, so they received a 10, 10-point reduction for that, and they also received another five-point reduction for not having the project schedule, similar to the other bidder. And then reviewing the references, they were deduced five points based on not meeting the minimum of K through 12 references within the past five years, and most of their, they did have one that was Blackstone Valley Prep, but that was within the past 10 years. Our specs specifically highlight the last five years of work experience in K through 12 schools. And then they received the full 40 points for the cost because they were a low bid. So that's kind of just a quick summary of how the, the bid evaluations were broken down and how each, each bidder got their scores.
Any other questions from the committee? Craig, is there anything from your end that you'd like to add?
No, just that, you know, in terms of the MWBE participation, one, knowing the, the work that we've done for the high school project and having, being a member of the Minority and Women Business Enterprise Task Force here within the city, that is something that, that the Department of Administration in Providence really looks to. They really look, look to us to lead the way, so that is, that is always key, so we always look for, for that, so.
Good evening. My name is Ron Caciulli. I'm filling in for Ben. I'm a partner with his, as attorney for the school committee. Do you want to know what the, the case law presently is in Rhode Island on public bids?
Please, yes.
So it, it comes from the H.V. Collins Company case that's been the law and has remained the law, and basically what they cite in there is that they reaffirm the standard that had been set forth, and it basically says, "When officials in charge of awarding a public works contract have acted fairly and honestly with reasonable exercise of a sound discretion, their actions shall not be interfered with by the courts. To hold otherwise would place the judiciary in the position of litigating the award of every state and municipal contract and would place public officials in charge of awarding such contracts in the legalistic straitjacket that this court denounced almost 27 years ago." They also say, "In reviewing bidding process, they'll only interfere with an award if, if the awarding authority has acted corruptly or in bad faith or so unreasonably or arbitrarily to be guilty of palpable abuse of discretion." So basically, what they say in public contracts is, as long as you have some criteria and you apply it reasonably, they're just not going to interfere with that, and that's, that's been the law in Rhode Island for a long time.
Any other questions? So if, now this is slated as, we obviously have other discussion items and action items down, does, if the committee wants to move now, then I'll entertain a motion to move up an action item.
I move to move up the action item number two.
A motion by Ms. Azanero to move action item four, two. Next, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Brandall, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So we'll, we'll conclude that and then we can address the other items. So I'll say a few words and then I'll, I'll open up to the committee. Definitely want to thank Steve, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, but from, from Mills, Mill City, I do appreciate you coming out, and all others. So if I, you've been doing this and we've seen many projects coming through the city, so I agree with Craig that MWBE is obviously important. For me, what, what also stood out is the experience piece, because I've seen where we, I won't name names, but we've just seen projects where we've had folks with, with, where we didn't do our part on the references or have relevant references. So that, to me, is, is, just as telling, or maybe even more, but that comments or entertain a motion, but I'll open to comments or. I'll entertain a motion as to upholding the selection of the bid award or upholding the protest by Mill City.
Can you say that again, please?
So basically, yeah, a motion in the back, and you, you phrase it however, however you like, but essentially we have, you know, a, a protest to the bid by Mill City Construction, so we could, I guess, if, if it matters on the term, but my thought was it could either be a vote to uphold the selection of the administration on the awardee or to uphold the?
On the current awardee, right?
Yes. To basically keep things as, as chosen by administration or to, I don't know what the next step, I guess would be to rebid, you know, or to basically rebid the project. Would that be appropriate, one of those two?
Yeah, is that? Yeah.
I think you have the, just hold on, whether you're going to uphold the approval of the contract because that contract is going to be, Mr. Eels, it's already been signed.
Okay. All right. So, so hearing, so hearing the protest, the vote is whether or not to uphold the contract that has been signed.
What would be the alternative if we did not? Yeah, I just want to know. Oh.
The microphone, please.
Are you just pulling in front of you? What would be, yeah, what would be the consequence?
Then you probably face an action from the people who've been awarded the contract that's already been executed.
They'd sue us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Scundry also researched this protest piece, and there's really nothing in the town charter or in any other document that has any kind of formal protest. What you're doing is you, you know, granted Mill City the opportunity to come before you and, and state their case, but there really is no bid protest process that's around.
So we'd potentially risk getting sued for more than the $70,000 that we'd save, if I'm hearing it correctly?
Yeah, potentially.
I move to uphold the current contract?
A motion by Ms. Azanero. Do we have a second discussion?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Brandall. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries upholding the awarding of the contract to the current awardee. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is the 2021, 2022 school reentry plan.
We're back again.
We're back again with new updates, but this time Dr. Farin will make the presentation as we've updated the previous plan.
Good afternoon. So we've had some changes since the last meeting and just so everyone understands, the plan continues to be fluid. We had several additions and deletions today. We've met with principals and talked to them. So it, it will continue right up until school starts and probably throughout the year to, you know, be fluid and to move as, you know, as the situation changes and we monitor the conditions that are going on right now. So, okay. So right now the, all students are returning in person, five days a week, full days. Pre-K through grade five will be in stable groups as much as possible. So those classrooms will be considered a stable pod. There will be some movement in and out of the classrooms. Teachers will be coming in and out of the classrooms. In elementary where they're departmentalized, they'll be moving classrooms, moving, students will move from room to room this year, so they are not in the same classroom all day long. And then in middle and high school, we're going to maintain a regular schedule right now while keeping three feet of distance in classrooms whenever possible, which we believe in most of our classrooms we can do at this point.
Can I ask a question on that page?
Sure.
Where it said the pre, pre-K to five and middle and high school, and you said we're going to keep them in pods and they'll be moving, I understand, to art, you know, when it comes to speech and language and OT and PT, those kids will not be doing it virtually again, correct? They will be going to the class, being pulled out and being seen by a physical person space.
That's correct. I think I, I think it's later in the presentation, but that's okay.
Because it's here and then we're getting into the other stuff, I just wanted to.
So intervention, all of our intervention will take place in person. We discussed with the elementary principals, trying to still maintain some type of pod integrity. So if we have a couple of first graders and a couple of second graders going, trying to keep those first graders a little distance from the second graders so that they're still in their stable pod, but they will be serviced and they will be serviced in person. And that includes inclusion, students will be coming into the classroom and like I said, intervention that takes place, whether it's reading or math intervention groups will take place. So the, I think the biggest change, and I think most people are familiar with this at this point, is that all students and staff will now be wearing masks when they're in the school buildings. The governor issued an executive order, I believe it was yesterday. So that has been updated. So that is per the governor's executive order, all students and staff, anyone in our school buildings will wear a mask when they're in the building. Obviously masks should be cleaned on a regular basis. We have plenty of masks in the schools if students need them or if they forget them. And we, all of last year we provided them, so that will be available. And then mask breaks will be scheduled as needed. So teachers will make sure that when a student needs a break, well, when a class needs a break, they'll get that. You know, we still do encourage outside activities whenever possible. A lot of the same conditions that were in place last year will be in place again this year, but we are hoping to run much more of a regular schedule for students. Obviously vaccinations are strongly recommended. Our vaccination rate, 40?
It was 43%. I sent it out to them, but I did just get today from the fire chief, the dates of vaccinations that we will be holding in school, and I'm going to send it out. 9:13 we'll have a vaccination clinic at the high school. On 9:15 we'll have one at Martin Middle School and at 9:17 we'll have one at Riverside Middle School in accordance with what Rhode Island Department of Health wants before October 3rd as well as RIDE. So we'll be sending out a brochure and with the times of those, and we'll be campaigning for people who are not vaccinated to go.
Ruth, chair? Just on that subject, Superintendent, okay? My grandson, who will be entering the seventh grade at Barton Middle School, was vaccinated a week ago. And I don't know how many children in the city were vaccinated, but his appointment, he was locked into an appointment on the 3rd of September. I don't know how many children will be affected by this, but they're going to have to leave school, I imagine, unless there's another plan made. So we'll have how many children leaving school to get their second vaccination? Do you know?
No. No, because I wouldn't know how many need that second vaccination, but I think, I'm going to get the links. I'm thinking that he could probably go to one on 9:13, which will be after school hours. We won't be scheduling them during the school day, the vaccination clinics, but we can let them go.
Well, he's supposed to get it on the 3rd, so I don't know how, how.
No. Just come in with an early dismissal and he'll come back after the.
And you could only, he could only get an appointment for school, during school hours.
Yeah.
They weren't making any appointments after school hours. So I'm, I'm sure there are a number of other children who are going to have to leave school on that day.
And we will allow it.
We will definitely accommodate that.
We definitely.
They, they won't be penalized.
Through the chair.
Well, that's good that it's, won't be penalized, but it's not their fault, you know?
No.
It's not their fault. You know, there's no way we could send a clinic to them and we don't know how many people got vaccinated on the 11th to 12th of, of August then.
No. Due to privacy, we do not.
Yeah, well, that's, that's fine, but all I'm saying is now we have to take X number of children out of school.
Yeah. And that's why we have scheduled some for after school, but we had two already in August earlier. And then. One Wednesday was the last one. It was during the day and at night. And then the Wednesday before was just during the day, right across the street from the high school, which we advertise too.
Again, he was given a frame, timeframe as when he had to get the.
Oh, absolutely. We all were given it actually when we had our first.
So.
It's actually a good point what Charlie's putting out. Maybe the state wants to get on board that, that they need to have nighttime hours.
Well, but, but I'm wondering, right? I mean, you know, the, the Ride and everyone else has been so vocal in saying, you know, let us know how we can help you, let us know how we can help you. So without violating HIPAA laws, but having access to those reports of as far as age and, and residence, I would imagine, right? They know age level in, in city or town. Could they potentially set up a time or space after school? I don't know. I don't know what detailed information they have, but.
The fire department runs these and they have to get approval from the Rhode Island Department of Health based on the vaccination numbers that they have and available people to give the vaccinations. We just got approval of this, this afternoon in an emergency management meeting.
And I think this needs to be considered as we do more vaccinations going forward. Do we want to take kids out of school or do we want to schedule later appointments? He was not given a choice for a later appointment.
No, and that's, and that's what I'm saying is maybe we need to, no, and maybe we do need to, Ride needs to realize and the Department of Health needs to realize if, if they're going to promote something like this, they're going to have to make it possible.
Ours are after school though.
Right, ours are, yeah.
So now we are trying to accommodate that.
Now we are.
And we did try to accommodate that in August too, but the next ones are all after.
And these are open to everybody?
Everybody?
Yes. Any age, just 12, 12 and up. But I meant any age.
Staff, families.
So I'm just curious as to, you know, whatever site, you know, your grandson as an example, right? Because, I mean, our experience was you may have had a time for that day, but as long as you showed up that day, they really, they, they didn't turn you away, right?
You mean the initial?
Both. Yeah, both, even for the second. So, so, you know, I'm just curious to know, like, you know.
No, he was given a specific block of time, Joe.
No, yeah.
And he had to be there.
No, and you had, right. It's a.
You couldn't just walk in.
When you signed up, you had to sign up for, yeah, you had to sign up for a specific block of time, but then when you actually showed up, it, it didn't, because, you know, we had people coming in.
I think it was because it was mass numbers. You guys had mass numbers. Now it's usually at local places.
Right, and that's the, the question. Well, that, well, that would be my, my, my question was that, you know, how late is that site open? If it closes at three, then it's a moot point with him going after school, but if it went till five, then.
They wouldn't take any appointments after 10.
Yeah. Like I said, what you can register for and when you actually show up, but if, if the building closes at three, then it's a moot point.
Yeah.
But if we could, I don't know, if you could kind of make a note to see if a call could be made to some of these, because again, we're, we're one district, but, I mean, there's been this big push and it's kind of a conflict of interest if you're saying, you know, we're excited to get our students back in the building, but, and, and we want our students vaccinated, but then we're going to schedule their vaccinations during school hours.
Right.
Without any flexibility.
At the beginning of the school year, which is very important.
Yeah. I think, I think it's worthy of some, some feedback at a minimum to the Department of Health, whether they do anything with it, at least, you know, they can choose not to do anything about it. But no, I think it's a good point to make.
I think it'd be even easier if they could, like, maybe some certain, like EMS people can go to certain schools during certain days during the week. In that way, they kind of visit each school throughout the district. I don't know if that's.
Well, I'm sure that, for instance, Charlie's grandson could go on the 13th to the high school. I'm sure he could sign up for there and just not go to the appointment that he scheduled for, Charlie. I'm going to send out the link. It's only a matter of a few days.
It's 10 days.
Yeah.
I don't know how important it is to be there.
It's the 3rd.
You know, he, he wants to stay at the schedule.
That's 10 days.
Either the 3rd or the 13th.
You think that's too?
I mean, I'm no medical professional.
We had to wait a month, right?
That is true. Two weeks. Oh, well, I don't know what you guys had to do, but.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying his, his appointment is. Kathy, in that, in that example, his appointment's on the 3rd.
I know.
So now you're extending it.
Yeah, you can't.
I just, you made this suggestion. I mean, Oz were a month apart when we went, I guess the, the span is shorter for a young child.
No, but imagine if you missed your second, right, your second was a month from the first, but that's not the question. If you went a week and a half after your schedule, is what you're, is what we're saying.
See.
Okay.
Mrs. Wallace, you get to.
I can answer that.
The children, 12 to 18 and getting Pfizer, there's a three week gap between the first and the second. Any one of us that had Moderna, it's a four week gap between getting the first and your second vaccine. And then there's a two week wait period after that before you're fully vaccinated. So that's how it's done. The other complicating factor about having a lot of different clinics to accommodate everyone is there has to be a doctor present too. So, and there are, you know, the EMTs are there. It's difficult to get that group together on a number of different times. So something also to keep in, in mind because I would love to be able to give the vaccine during the day while they're in school, but I'd have to have a doctor present, so.
Well, that's fine. It's just a matter of scheduling, organizing it in a way that it's effective for everybody.
Exactly. Exactly. So right now that schedule is, has been up to Paul Poyven from the fire department. He has the personnel that are there, the doctors, the EMTs, everyone. So up until this point, he has been the deciding factor, the decider on all of these things. So if we want to make a change.
Yeah, but I, I think we need to give some input.
Yes, I think that would be a great idea.
Thank you. And who's going to give that input?
I'd be happy to call Ride. They, Run Department, they love me.
Yeah, I think, I think.
I think we'll let Diane's liaison, we have to see, we have a liaison that we contact. And so she's the liaison. She can call for you.
I mean, if, if we have a little glitch, then we can fix it, but, but let's go through the process.
No, I, you know, but I think it coming from, you know, official letterhead, you know, from the district has a request to. So you can, can you just kind of give us an email blast when it, when it goes out, just kind of confirm that that, that's happening?
Yes.
Sorry.
So vaccinated individuals will not need to quarantine in the case of exposure. So we're going to follow all of the Rhode Island Department of Health guidance on this. It has been adjusted at times, so we'll just continue to follow what they say. Right now that is the case. They are recommending testing for vaccinated official, vaccinated individuals that have been exposed. And you did mention earlier, we, in order to follow that, we would need proof of student vaccination because we don't have access to that. So if parents didn't want their student to quarantine, then they would need to prove they were vaccinated and that could be submitted to Diane or the school nurse.
So just to.
Just.
Repeat and be clear though, it's not mandatory that you tell us, but if you don't want to be subject to the quarantine by.
By school.
State.
Right, by.
Mandate.
Right.
Then you need to show proof of that. So you do have an option, but.
Right. But as far as school goes and being quarantining in school, we would need to know that the child has been vaccinated in order to not quarantine.
Because that would be dangerous for other children.
And quarantining, going back to what we know as quarantining. Or has that changed?
14 days?
No, so 10 or a 7th?
7.
I don't know.
7 days.
7, are we going?
So it's seven days unless you show a vaccination to the nurse. It doesn't have to go to a teacher, it doesn't have to go to a principal, it can go to the nurse. And that includes seven days of no school and no sports.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we got that straight. You just can't come to school and can't participate in sports.
And, you know, just. With regards to the proof of vaccination, it's funny, today I received an email from one of my larger accounts that they basically are requiring everyone that does business with them, their company has to submit a document saying that every employee that is going into their establishment is vaccinated or, or we can't go in. So, you know, I know it's controversial, but it's, you know, and this is, this is again another, you know, an educational institution that is taking that position.
And quarantining would result from being less than six feet for more than 15 minutes. So typically at the elementary level last year, most of the time a whole class was quarantined because they do mingle at recess and they mingle throughout the day. Secondary, we were most of the time a little more successful at the high school level of isolating because they stay in that one area. So again, we'll have to, we have to be able to guarantee that students were not exposed. So that'll depend on really the classroom and the structure as to who's determined to be a close contact.
And can I just make a clarification? Jessica mentioned that proof of vaccination, Diane is going to be the keeper of the health records for that. So the school nurse would immediately send that to the head nurse who keep that all confidential in a health file. Okay?
Yeah. I think we covered that one. So again, we're going to, we are going to move class to class when it's appropriate for students. We're going to look to assigned classroom movement in ways that minimize the distance and the traffic flow. And that will be up to individual principals and teachers to work out the flow for their classroom, which they did last year also. Maintaining three feet of distance whenever possible, assigned seating in the classroom. So once, you know, students are in the classroom, those seats are assigned and seating charts, it's, it's really essential that we have up to date seating charts because the Department of Health asks us for those and that's how we determine who the close contacts are. So principals will be stressing that with their teachers, that those need to be kept up to date, as well as bus seating charts, which they ought, they ask for all of that when we have a positive case. And then we, this year, school staff will be traveling also, so the art, music, they'll be able to run their normal schedule and go classroom to classroom. And then as far as recess goes at the elementary school, stable groups, again with your classroom for recess and outdoor play, like last year, hand sanitizing, hand washing on the way out, on the way in. And then if more than one stable group is outside, then we would want to maintain six feet of distance between those stable groups. So classes should have some distance between them. And right now there is no outdoor limit, but if things do change, we would, we would follow whatever the limit was that the state set. Our plan is to continue, well, I guess to pick up our community events again this year as much as possible. So we do have back to school nights scheduled at our schools. Right now, most of them are scheduled for outdoors and that's probably how we would keep them. There are meet the teachers nights that are on the schedule. And right now that's, the plan would be to move ahead with those unless something changes. Masks will be required of everyone that enters the building. And then again, we would encourage parents and families to keep. And then again, we would encourage parents and families to keep three feet of social distancing between each other. All visitors to the building will need to wear a mask, and the visitors will be at the discretion of the principal. So, I mean, obviously, if we have people that have to come in, vendors and provide services, we encourage them to come, you know, after school. But if they need to come into the building, you know, they would just need to check in with the principal. And also, any speakers or presenters that would come to the building, that would be at the discretion of the principal. And the self-attestation form will be quarterly this year. So parents would need to, it'll be, Ben and I were discussing this today. It will probably be an initial Google form for all parents. Part of that self-attestation will be certifying that you will monitor for the symptoms every day with your child. We just, it was difficult last year and really cut into our instructional time because we, you know, had trouble, you know, with a lot of people not completing that on a daily basis, and then the school nurse and the principal having to to do that screening every day, which slowed down students getting into the classroom in their academic time. So we're asking parents to do that each quarter, to check their children every morning. And then we will continue the school nurse and the principals and the teachers monitoring for symptoms. We're, in a lot of cases, we're usually the first people that pick up on it anyways. The classroom teacher can see when, you know, a student comes in and they're not feeling well. So they they are usually sent right to the nurse.
And we have to maintain quarantine rooms, too.
We have to maintain our quarantine rooms. Diane just went on, and we we have that in our schools. So that will also continue if a student is diagnosed as positive with the binex testing.
Yeah, we did speak with the principals yesterday, so everyone will have an isolation area. Some of them have been readjusted since last year.
I just wanna give a quick update to the chairman. The video is not working right now. So I I just wanna give you a heads up for the rest of this group that.
Right, we're down on the stream, I guess.
Yeah, so I just wanna make that. I know that there are people watching where they, so rerun this, you know, a couple of times.
This will be up on the web tomorrow. Staff will also complete the attestation form, and we will probably run it like we did last year, where you can choose to identify that you're vaccinated and you won't have to fill it out every day. Otherwise, you would need to continue to fill it out.
Can I ask a question on that? So if we're, proof of vaccination will go to the nurse, but who's collecting the attestation?
For staff or for students?
Oh, that last piece was staff?
That was staff.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
And we actually, they created a great form last year, so every principal can see who filled out the the attestation in the morning before they came in. And then once you identified that you were vaccinated, your name came off the list, so they didn't even have to look for you anymore.
So who who does the staff identify? Do they show proof of vaccination?
They they just attest that they have been vaccinated. So we we've asked them to send in a vaccination card to HR, and then they would just identify.
So 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 I guess, yeah, I'm just looking for equity where, so if our if our students have to show a card and actual proof to someone, I would expect that our employees are doing the same in order to be exempt from.
If they're if they're saying on the attestation form that they are vaccinated, then they should be submitting a vaccination card to HR.
Okay, so and that'll be required. I just wanna be clear.
It hasn't been until you said it just now.
I just wanna be clear because it's the same, you know, the intention and, you know, that the purpose is the same. So if we're going to tell students and families that, I know that, I understand that it becomes a, you know, a piece with with legal, but I guess.
Can we do that? I mean, Ron, that's acceptable, right?
I believe I believe it is acceptable because I was told if we wanted to make all of our staff vaccinated, we could, and that came from our. Turn. Yeah. Oh, I'm, it it'd be good to keep the same standard.
The issue with that is you have to buy, and that's been the whole complaint. Or you gotta end up in front of the Labor Board. If you just say, everybody's getting vaccinated, you have no choice. What the unions are saying, you have to at least impact bargain, saying, you know, how's this gonna affect them? So that hasn't been tested yet, but somebody's gonna go to the Labor Board.
Right.
Eventually.
But if but if we're, if if we treat our our employees just as we are the students, where we're saying, you know, you can you can you can state that you're vaccinated, but you have to show proof, so we can require the same from employees if it's exempting them from other.
Again, you're not, you're not saying you have to get vaccinated. You're just saying if you're telling us you are, just.
Show proof.
And if you want, if you don't wanna quarantine, show proof.
Right. Yeah.
Good point.
Thank you.
So as far as instruction goes, all teachers will continue to maintain a Google Classroom site. So if an individual student is quarantined, then work will be pushed out on the site like it has been. So we won't be asking teachers to do a hybrid model. If an entire class was to be quarantined, then we would go to live instruction, and we would have that teacher do live instruction. So that will be on a case-by-case basis, but based on the classroom.
That teacher be in our building, teaching live?
Yes.
Unless they're quarantined and they're not vaccinated.
Then they will not be in the building. They'll be home teaching.
We would encourage them to be in the building if if.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
So I guess, so so if they're a vaccinated employee and they're in that classroom, they would not need to quarantine. So they would do their instruction from the.
From the classroom. And then we know that there, that, you know, there was instruction missed last year and that students are in different places. So, you know, we'll be using our iReady testing as usual with the beginning, middle, and end-of-year assessments, along with different progress monitoring tools and a variety of formative assessments throughout the year, and that varies by grade level. And we have a couple new curriculums that have assessments built into them, so we'll be looking at that. And just to mention, we also just finished the six-week summer program. And we we, between pre-K to twelve, we had about five hundred students that were involved in summer programs this summer. And I will say, we had one case of COVID all summer that we were made aware of. Two? Three?
Three.
We had three. Sorry.
I think.
About a five hundred? Come on, that's wonderful.
I think one went after. That we got, I think one was after. I think maybe two.
And all one passed.
At the secondary level, older students. So, you know, we were, we were really happy with that. Social emotional supports. We had a very comprehensive social emotional plan last year. These are some of the highlighted strategies that we'll be discussing with teachers. We'll be looking to pilot an SEL screener for students. And then we, I'm not exactly sure where we are with this, but we were looking for additional social worker support.
Mrs. Anderson told me today, she interviewed six.
Okay, so we will have additional social workers in the school to support. We do anticipate there'll be anxiety coming back into school for some students, and we wanna make sure that we're ready for that and that we can support families and students and get them back into the classroom. And we did see some of that this summer. So and part of the summer program was bringing in a lot of distance learners that hadn't been in. So we do think it, you know, it was good for them to get back into school and get into the routine, and I think that will be beneficial to some of those students once we pick up again in September. As far as operations go, buses will operate at full capacity, which is a change from last year. We'll need to keep the windows open. Masks will need to be worn at all times on the bus. Again, hand sanitizer when you go in the bus, come out of the bus. We will wipe wipe down the buses after each run and then sanitize at the end of the day. The bus is considered its own stable pod, so when we do have the seating charts and a student on the bus tests positive, we do end up quarantining around that seat where the student is. So that will remain in effect for unvaccinated students. And then as of right now, appeals would not be approved at the beginning of the year so that we can make sure where we are with busing and that all the students that qualify are able to take the bus this year. Technology, all students have a device. If they were with us last year, we will continue to issue devices to all new students. We need students to bring their devices to school each day, fully charged in the sleeve. And we have a variety of software that teachers have requested and schools have requested, and we'll be using that to maximize instruction in the classroom. We we made a a point with the pre-K through five to use very little technology, if any, this summer. And I think it was a nice break for our students to really have just teacher interaction, pencil and paper. Who thought that, you know, that would be so great again, but I think they really did like just face-to-face interaction with teachers. So again.
That was my question. Are we, I mean, are we allowing paper back into our schools?
We ask. Paper, we've discussed manipulatives and how we can clean those, you know, when students are using them, if they don't each have their set. We really want to return to normal instruction. So we will make sure that we we do all of that, and we're cleaning them and students are sanitizing their hands if they're using material that might be shared at some point. But yes, I I think the screen time will be reduced a lot this year. I know. Their eyes will be very happy, and I think our teachers and our students will be very happy with that. So just to go over the opening of schools a little bit at the secondary level, because there was some questions. So we we know that basically our sixth and seventh graders have not really seen, some of them, the school itself. It was not a normal last year, last year. Some students in seventh grade were on distance learning all year, some students in sixth grade. So we're gonna do a roll-in of grades. So on Thursday, September second, grades six, eight, and nine will come in. The other grades will be at home. On Friday, grades six, seven, and twelve will come in. And we also know that the high school, none of our students have seen the high school. So we want to do a day of orientation with each grade level at the high school, so everybody can get used to the building, you know, with just that small group of students there. On Tuesday, it'll be six, seven, eight at the middle school, so all students will be in on Tuesday in grade eleven. Wednesday will be again full middle school, grade ten, and then on Thursday, September ninth, all grades six through twelve will be in for a regular school day. Any questions about that plan? I'm gonna briefly talk about what's planned for those days. So middle school, typically, we would just do this with sixth grade, but again, since seventh grade has, a lot of seventh graders have not really been in school or have not had a normal school year. We will be extending this to seventh grade also. So at both middle schools, we met today and discussed everything. Parents can bring their child to the front of school. We won't be allowing parents into the school, but they can just, they can walk them to the door.
So you're talking parking your car.
If you want.
Else. And then, because I I just want to verify this, because that you park your car somewhere else, then you walk your child to the front of the building. You don't drive up in front of the school.
Well, you you can follow the normal traffic pattern that we have.
Right.
You can drop your child off if you don't wanna walk them to the door. But typically, with sixth grade, we've opened it up to parents and said, you know, come in, we'll do a quick orientation with you, and then we'll take your child. We we're not gonna do that this year. We're just, but they can come and walk with them, you know, park their car and walk with them to the front. That's entirely up to them. And then there will be extended homeroom time for all of the middle school students, where they'll receive their schedule, they'll have locker time, they'll go over the expectations and introductions. So that usually takes a good chunk of time on those days. So students will also have a modified schedule at both schools. They'll they'll visit all seven of their classes, but they'll just be short in periods because the morning routine takes a while the first couple of days. Extended lunch, typically, sixth grade lunch takes, it's usually twenty-five minutes, but usually it takes well over an hour on the first day because there's a lot of choices at middle school and they don't know their PIN numbers, so we have to go through all that. So that'll take a little while. And then extended day dismissal, getting students to the buses, making sure they're on the right buses, takes us a while. So that will also be extended. So that's kind of an overview of what the middle school day will look like for sixth and seventh grade. Eighth grade is a little more familiar, so they'll still get some of that, but they won't get all of that. All right.
Excuse us, we gotta be flying around.
We're paying attention.
But it's, this thing's so big. He landed on the podium. I heard him land.
He doesn't think.
So the first day of school for the high school, and this will look similar for all the classes, but it'll be welcome, and students will report to the auditorium the first day. All of the staff will be in there. There'll be an introduction of principals, assistant principals, deans, guidance counselors, the SROs. There'll be an overview of the day. Freshmen will meet their advisors, and they'll go to the freshman advisory where they'll review the handbook, the schedule, lunch. And then they'll go through the the daily schedule. It'll be an abbreviated schedule. And that will look the same for all of the classes on the first day at the high school. So that's basically all I have on the reentry. This document and the return-to-learn document will be posted on the website. Again, there has, there have been some changes since the original version a couple of weeks ago, and we will continue to update that anytime we make changes, and we'll we'll post it to the website.
And I'm going to have posted to the executive order.
From the governor.
It's actually in the plan. There's a link to it right in the plan. It's also a link to the mask policy.
Perfect. Which is the original mask policy that we have.
No, so it's the draft of our policy right now that's waiting for the second read, right?
Do you wanna keep that one or you don't wanna discuss it at all?
Well, I I thought we were just going to continue with the one that we had last year.
We basically are due to executive order, but you might want to.
Yeah, I think we'll still, we'll still do a second reading and approve.
Because I believe Sandy has to attach a policy right to our plan because now we have to submit this to the Rhode Island Department of Education by the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, like, you know, the the executive order kind of removes that policy anyway, so we're not time, you know, time constrained to to approve it, but, you know, so if we do it in the September meeting.
Yeah.
Who knows? We might have COVID four by that time. Who knows?
Listen. That that thing flying around will bite you.
It is huge. So I just wanna clarify a couple things. I just wanna tell you that I will be asking about the mask breaks because I think last year, what happened was we got so good on them at the beginning of the year and towards the end, it kind of fizzled out. I am adamant about mask breaks in the schools, especially when it's nice out, not just one school, all schools. Outdoors, we're not requiring masks because there's no, no. No requirement, just like it is. So there's no executive order. So if students are outside at recess, they will not have to wear masks, but are can if they want. Other thing, lunches. I know we haven't discussed it, but are they free this year? Is breakfast free?
All year long. Breakfast and lunch.
So based on free breakfast and lunch for all of our students, will it still be very limited food options and cold food?
So.
Because it won't have to go to the classroom?
So Melissa Reed and I talked about that a little bit the other day. I think there are going to be two choices to start the year. And there will be hot lunches in there. We, so right now, after meeting with the elementary principals, their concern is not being able to distance pods six feet in the cafeteria. So we're still working through, high school and middle school will eat in the cafeteria. We feel like, you know, we, in the cases where we need to distance, we can. Elementary, we're still trying to work through it. So it could be that sometimes, it could be that they're eating in the classroom because of the distance in the cafeteria and not being able to get everyone in in all the lunches.
Okay, so I would like to know that, number one, if we're keeping our elementary school students in our classrooms, because that that's new to me now. No, I I understand. I understand, but I wanna know. Number two, I would like Melissa at our next meeting to discuss the lunches.
Okay.
And breakfasts. I'm not saying that they weren't great options last year, and I understand the reason. But if we're gonna go back to normal or as normal as we can, I would like to know what their normal is going to be. I think that's fair. It's fair to our students. It's fair to our parents to know that if they choose to not bring lunch, what the options are, especially for breakfast and lunch. And I know how important breakfast is, and I know a lot of children don't eat it, and I think when we had availability for free breakfast, a lot more people were eating it. So I'd like to know where we're going with that.
And we we are. And we, we are still discussing like the cafeteria option with elementary school. But again, I mean, safety has to be our first priority. And if we can't keep spacing in between those pods, then we don't want to put students at risk. So, you know, we've talked about a rotation, we've talked about different options. But everybody's looking at their coverage right now to see, you know, what is feasible at this point.
Right. And if we do have to hire other people to cover lunches, I'm sure we have money for COVID-related expenses that we could use if we needed to do so. I know a lot of schools can eat outside, too. I know that's also an option.
We have the coverage already. In the schools, those building-based powers are in there. And primarily, all the principals asked and they covered, to make sure they had enough to cover recess and to cover lunches in a normal lunch pattern. So we do, we have that. And we would certainly like to rotate them through the cafeteria if we can't do, you know, maybe grades K-1.
I can tell you the one school that can't. I mean, I, I, no one's, no one knows, everyone knows what I'm talking about. You can't rotate them out fast enough with no COVID.
No, I mean, like, for instance, maybe one week, maybe grades K-1, 2 go into the cafeteria to eat their lunches. The next week, it would be, just so the kids get into the cafeteria and socialization there as well. So we're meeting with all of the directors and all of the principals, hopefully on Monday.
I don't want custodians to like lose their arms because they're literally cleaning nonstop. Because that's what will happen. And I, but I do want to know what, what we're doing across the board, especially if certain schools can't accommodate and other certain schools can accommodate.
So there will be consistency between the schools. So that's, we, like I said, we met and we discussed it. So we want this, all students to have the same experience. So we're going to work through that.
And did everybody notice our big signs on the front of all of our buildings? Oh, boy. Well, we, sure. We started our kickoff campaign. Thank you very much. We started, oh, you took them down again? Oh, but for the hurricane!
Like, I didn't see any signs. But there is a hurricane, so maybe you should take them down.
No, no, they were up, he's took them down.
If you haven't seen them, just look to the sky.
The bad liar you are.
I asked him to take them down, but they were up. So I'll, I'll let you know when they're up.
Yeah. For the kids welcoming them back, all kids every day.
We're trying to be nice, Tony. You really did it very quickly this time. No, boy. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Like, like last year, you know, when you guys get into just about every detail and, and, you know, you mentioned it earlier, for me, like, you know, just the fluidity of it. You know, understanding that things are going to pop up and, you know, and I, I appreciate the, the drive. Actually, first I want to state, because I did have to clarify with someone, distance learning is not an option per Rhode Island Department of Ed. It's not an East Providence decision. So, you know, it's not like you guys have said, hey, this is our plan. We're choosing everyone in the building. But instead, you are putting together a plan to execute it and, and.
The commissioner on Tuesday's new conference with the governor, that question was asked by a reporter and she said that she wanted all students in person in their schools, that it was best for the students. And we even have to ask permission and set up and send her criteria to have virtual learning on a snow day. So it's not an automatic, so just to let you know that.
But how about on PD days?
Our professional development days during the calendar year, we're having virtual learning. That's allowed, yes. That's the idea.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, I do have one. Hold on. Sorry, it was in my notes, that my iPad doesn't work either. After schools, are we, we're going to continue all of our old after-school programming, correct? Like with the other Y, Boys and Girls Club, all that stuff?
We are. We have a meeting with the Y on Monday to talk about everything.
And sports are going off, and I, I know I spoke to the superintendent about this, but we're going, they're going to follow those interscholastic leagues. So right now, they don't, right. So the other thing is, as going back to normal, we are going to try to do the other extracurricular activities that schools provide, right? Like clubs and all that good stuff, back to normal.
Okay, thank you.
What about with that, like, what about your PTA, PTO events and anything like that?
That's the plan right now. I believe that the schools have scheduled them. So we are hoping to be able to do all of those events.
I, I, my first meeting at RMS, I'm sorry, Mr. Perry, I didn't do it yet. Plan to be outside. I mean, you can have meetings outside as long as it's nice and it's.
No, it's just like even, you know, again, as the school year goes on and there are student events and so forth.
I'm hoping that as this year goes on, this, this becomes null and void. I really am.
Well, you know, yeah.
It's got to be, it's got to, remember, it's got to be fluid because they are predicting an uptick in the end of September. So we want to be cautious and careful. And then they're anticipating that due to vaccinations and everything, that that will go down. So, yes, parents can come in, we can start it, you know, providing everything stays as is at the present time.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important to note, you know, the vaccination rate, right? Which we talked about earlier. When we last met and we had voted to, you know, go, you know, with the choice method, I think, speaking for myself, I don't, I'm not a medical, I'm not a clinician, so I didn't feel that it was my place to impose something greater than, than the state medical officials. But I was half anticipating them to come back and say, okay, we'll do it district by district based on vaccination rates. And then when those rates came out, I think, you know, I mean, that's a kick in the knees. So, you know, if they ever do go with that and loosen it up to, you know, by district based on vaccination rate, we're not going to fare much better. So, you know, and it's not, it's not with the intention of getting into a, you know, pro-vaccine, anti-vaccine. But at the end of the day, as a community, we've got to own our decisions. So if the overall decision is going to be to not get vaccinated and the state decides to put in that criteria, that, you know, determining factor, then we can't cry about the outcome. So, you know.
And I'll keep you posted on that idea, Sandy, about that.
So, do we want to? I'm trying to think, is anyone here that's not going to be here for the budget piece? Like, should we, do we need to vote on that? Would you like to? Yeah, actually, but do we need to vote on? If you guys want to vote on the reentry plan now or later, it's up to you, it doesn't? Yeah.
Yeah, I can move, I can make a motion to move up action item number three. Second.
Motion by Ms. Mo Shan, second by Ms. Zazaner, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you vote?
I have a question. Just to, my only hesitation on voting is, was there anyone here that wanted to say anything else about the reentry? In the audience or?
As far as your.
Does a gentleman back? Yeah, I just wondered if, if we should hear what people might have to say before we vote on it. That's all.
Well, then, yeah, so we can, we can, we can enter, I mean, if you guys want a motion to move public comment up, because it is after the action items, which to me doesn't matter. But do we have someone here?
Yeah.
Please, yeah. We don't need any formality to move any agenda pieces around. Unless the committee needs, but I'm okay with, yeah, come on, please.
So thank you for letting me speak. Superintendent, school committee members, and EPSC staff. I'm a former teacher, district leader, coach, and consultant. Most recently, I was a technology director for a school district navigating between distance, hybrid, and in-person learning during the pandemic. I'm currently a director of analysis at a company that focuses on disinformation and misinformation. So I know a little bit about all the things that we're talking about here. And most importantly, I'm a father of a brilliant incoming kindergartner at Myron Francis. After watching the previous meeting on the reopening plan, I had a lot of really grave safety concerns specifically related to the optional masking policy. I'm really glad to see that that has changed, if only forced by the governor. The reason doesn't really matter to me, as long as it's done, that's important. The things that still concern me are the lack of a testing regime, like a weekly testing regime for students and staff, the lack of a vaccine requirement for all eligible staff and students, and the lack of a remote learning option for those families that need it. I hear the remote learning option being a challenge for the state to address. So we don't need to talk about that here. By recommending not requiring masks initially, as well as these other mitigations, the district is endangering our children and staff unnecessarily, especially our youngest students who are not yet eligible for vaccination. This includes my daughter and thousands of students like her. I'm glad to hear that mandatory masking is now included in the reopening plan, and that's a great step forward. My goal isn't to cast dispersions on the district leaders, who I'm, who I've worked with and I greatly respect, but to point out the very real risk posed to unvaccinated and immunocompromised staff and students. We won't put our daughter at risk, and we should not have to in order for her to attend her local public school. In her letter to the school districts, Dr. Alexander Scott wrote that, while test positivity rate for Rhode Islanders aged 30 and older has been 3.5% or less since the start of August, positivity rate among children has been above 5% with the rate of 5.9 among children 10 to 14. We know the Delta variant is more transmissible, has been rapidly tearing through unvaccinated student populations in southern states that have already gone back to school. In Texas and Florida, many hospitals have no available pediatric ICU beds. We should mandate masks, weekly testing in our schools for all students and staff, as well as vaccination for the students and staff who are eligible. Frequently, opponents of mask mandates and other public health mitigations frame this as an issue of individual liberty or family choice. You can choose to have your child wear a mask, and I can choose to have my children not wear a mask. This fundamentally misunderstands the nature of public health and the responsibility of state and local governments to ensure the welfare of citizens in public spaces, especially compulsory settings like schools. In order to keep everyone safe, we need these mitigations in place. Devolving decision-making on critical public health mitigations like masking and others to individual families during a pandemic is misguided and leads to unnecessary risks for all of us. I implore the school committee and district leadership to reconsider. And my only question at the end is to make sure that I can understand the data on vaccination for staff and for students that were eligible. Because I know that Barrington put that out, and I think it may have been mentioned, but the stream broke down, and that's why I came inside, because I was trying to watch outside. And also just to better understand the structure for mitigations while at lunch. Many schools can be outside, I don't know if we have filters. I just want to get a better sense for that, since my daughter's going to be in there. And I want to, I want to kind of understand how that works. I really appreciate it.
No, thank you.
So that was one thing we did not mention, just so you aren't aware. We do have air filters in all of our schools and all of our classrooms. And I, and that, I, I've called the superintendent three times this week about that, and I still forgot to mention it tonight. So they are, they were in there last year, and they will be there. And they are all new filters inside of them, so.
And they're, they're in offices as well. We also do have a, a testing protocol, which I did not put in the PowerPoint. It just dawned on me when you said that. The Department of Ed requires us to determine, based on transmission rates in the city, how often we'll test. It is opt-in testing only, so parents can choose whether or not. But once we get to, if we're at a high or a moderate, I believe they called it, then we would look at weekly testing in those areas. It's still opt-in.
And the data with East Providence, as of the work that I got, out of the amount of students that we can have vaccinated, we're at 37.3. That's the data that you guys sent me? I don't know if there was one today?
No, we, we got a new one yesterday, or was it 40? Y dot sent me, that's the latest they have.
Okay.
It's in the low 40s. And so it's a little better, but.
Yeah, well, as of Tuesday, I mean.
So it's in the low 40s.
It's in the low 40s.
Yeah, low 40s, 43%. Pardon me?
For staff. So I, I, I think.
That's the older, we didn't get that range. We looked at the range for the young, but I believe.
Staff was high, I thought.
The older you have, the, the, the older you are, the greater the percentage of people that are vaccinated throughout the state, actually. And we believe, we do believe, we started to collect some data last year on this and voluntarily having them in. I, I would believe we're close to 95% of our staff being vaccinated, to be quite honest with you.
And that, and I think that's going to be a funky number, right? Based on the earlier conversation, because it's, it, they're not required to tell us unless they want to be exempt from the quarantine component. So I could be vaccinated, but for whatever reason, not want to share that with my, with, you know, if I work for the school department, and I say, you know what, it's none of your business, I don't want you to know. And if you have to quarantine me for seven days, I'll, I'll take it, I don't know why. But in other words, there's, you know, we can't, right?
Right.
If I'm wrong, like, we can't say you have to tell us that you are vaccinated. So we're asking, and by telling us, and that's what was stated in that, both for students and for, for employees, by officially informing us, then that will determine how we react to a potential quarantine situation.
And I can tell you the numbers of, of East Providence residents, but our staff aren't all East Providence residents. So just so you know, at, once again, this is Tuesday's data. I don't know if, and this you can get on the Rhode Island Department of Health website. 25 to 40, oh, I'll do fully vaccinated. 25 to 44 was 53%, 45 to 64 was 71%, and age 65 and older was at 94.7%. So that's East Providence residents. I, I know that we have staff everywhere, but.
So this is what I'll do. I'm going to send, I'm going to talk to the union president first in each of the unions. And I'm going to ask them if I could send out something and ask the staff to respond to me based on the situation and the safety of young children. I can't say that I can make them, but let me try that effort for you, okay?
You're welcome.
I will do that. Yes, that's okay.
I know, I'm going to, I'm going to have you make a walk so we can get you on.
You also tell us your name when you come to the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, sorry. So I'm Michael Klein, I live in Rumford. So my other question was, is it the, is it the school committees understanding that they do not have the authority to mandate the, to mandate people to give the vaccination information? Or is it there, that they don't feel comfortable and/or don't want to make that decision right now?
I'd let our attorney answer that.
I think their position is, the way I understand it is, they've asked them, when they fill out a self-out-ofstation form, if they've been vaccinated. And if so, they're going to require proof of the vaccination. If they choose not to give the information, then they're going to be subject to the quarantine policies.
Different question. My question was, is it that the board does not think that they have the authority to require people to tell them if they are vaccinated or not?
Yeah, I think at this point, they do not have the authority to do that.
And that's the legal counsel. Got it. And that differs from others.
So I'm going to try from the other.
And I, yeah, and speaking individually, I think from there, right, would be individual opinion. You know, my sense is, is that precedence hasn't been set to show that, that we have that authority to my comfort level, you know, between, you know, HIPAA laws and so forth. You know, that basically are our, you know, you know, your, the privacy of your, of your health status is, you know, is it required? So where there are, and again, this is my kind of interpretation and understanding, we have accommodations to adjust for either or. And, and that's what I'm saying. So if you choose not to inform us, well, then we will respond in this manner. And I think we can legally put those steps and procedures in place to, to add, to add protection levels. But I, I haven't seen, read, or been, you know, informed to a level where I feel like we can say no to show up to work. You know, and like I, you know, I stated, I, I have, you know, accounts that if. And like I, you know, I stated, I have, you know, accounts that if I want to do business and step inside their establishment, I'm required to show proof of vaccination. They're a private organization, and they can do that, you know, because now there's other pieces where a public entity and not a private organization, so that brings in a whole other, you know, as a taxpayer, you know, if you say no, I don't want you as my representative requiring that, so.
And I work with federal agencies, and we're required to be vaccinated to go in, and they're obviously federal government agencies. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your questions, and appreciate you taking time. This committee decided to have the meeting here at council chambers in order to accommodate the potential turnout. But thank you very much for being here and asking your questions. Thank you.
And to Charlie's point, right, and that was a conversation with Charlie, said, you know, where are we having this? Because had the, just to speak bluntly, had the governor not, you know, stepped up and done his job, then this room would have looked a lot different.
Except that we didn't have masks, the mask policy, we never voted on the first time. It was only read, it was never voted on, so we've never voted either way. And I said it that night, the night that we had the mask policy on the agenda, even if we did vote it, I told the person right out there, I don't know how we would vote, because, you know, we don't talk about it. So if it was on tonight, I still wouldn't know how half of us would have voted, if it would have passed or if it would have failed. So I want to make that clear. We didn't ever voted on it. It was presented, but as part of the reentry plan, but we never got to vote on it, and.
And to that point, right, Jesse, if you think, and that's why that mask policy is still relevant, because, you know, it basically says that any, any mandate is, is, any decision here can be made unless a higher authority, being the governor, mandates something. At that point, superintendent does not need our authority. She's expected and obligated to follow that, which is where we are today. So the policy that's in place, still absent an executive order, puts the decision like that with the school committee, which, but to Jesse's point, you know, I don't know had the governor not done his job, and I'll keep saying that as often as I can, or, you know, the commissioner. I don't know where we would have been, because, you know, I believe in the safety piece myself, but I also take it very seriously in not, not voting for me personally, but for the community. So, you know, like, I'm, to me, the masking is wise, especially when I look at the vaccination rates, it's, you know, it's a wise decision. But as a representative of the community, that's where it gets fuzzy and very difficult. So, and it shouldn't be a community going at odds against each other when you have the governor and commissioner of education sitting next to the department of health that's saying, you really should do this, but I don't want to tell you to do this. So anyway, I'll stop. So that was my little blurb, and I'm just a little frustrated that we had to get to this point, but, yes, thank you, and your questions were spot on, and appreciate it. So, I know, Ms. Morado, you had non-agenda, so different topic? Okay. Before we close the vote, that way.
All right, I just wanted you to know, I'm reading off of my notes in my phone. I'm not, no one's texting me, telling me what to say. So my name is Kim Morado. I reside in Riverside. I'm a parent of two students at Riverside Middle School, and in the interest of full disclosure, I also teach at Riverside Middle School. And I just wanted to, I know we're not allowed to address people in the audience, I'm not going to say anything bad. I just honestly, last year, I was immunocompromised going into the school system, going back to school, and I chose to go back to school because the back-to-school reentry plans are incredible. Like, I cannot tell you, I mean, if Dr., oops, if Dr. Fauci ever resigns, no offense, but Dr. Perry, I can only speak for Riverside, he is like, he has a job. He will have a job, I'm sorry. And I'm sure all of you, you especially, going through all of these plans. So this school department does do an amazing job. So, and I, my own children, I sent back in for the same reason. So as many of you know, there's a lot of divisive, I cannot speak, I'm sorry, divisiveness in our country. That's not a secret, as well as in our community. And I'm not here to give my opinion, but to ask that all of us in the community come together and try to be as positive as we can as students head back to school again this year. Children take their cues from the adults around them, and some have a great deal of anxiety about heading back to school. I saw that firsthand as a teacher and as a parent. So I would just urge anyone who's watching to be the calm in a child's storm, instead of trying to create or adding to the storm. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
And Kim, make sure you look for our signs when Tony puts them back up after the hurricane welcoming our children back. Thanks, Kim.
Kim, thank you. That was, that was spot on, and I couldn't agree more. You know, we see it, and it's more, I don't know, people just want to create dust clouds, and, you know, the students are the ones that have to spend, you know, six hours in the building, and they should do so with as much comfort as possible. There's a lot of work being put in to give them and provide the comfort, and, but I think the way that they enter sets the tone for the way they receive their environment. You know, and, yeah, so, thank you. So on that, but I want to close out. So am I clear in telling Sharon that there was a five to zero vote in acceptance of the reentry?
I think you're talking to me.
Well, yeah, well, I, okay. Well, no, we did, but then it got paused, so.
We didn't vote.
I think, with all respect.
We did not vote.
We held this meeting here in order to hear people, and I know it's item number five, but I just didn't feel right voting on something unless we heard from people who took the time out of their lives, and I can't speak for everybody else, but we've got many emails from residents in the city, and many from Rumford, Ward 1, and with the whole, throughout the whole city. So I just thought we should hear what people have to say before we vote. But yes.
So with that, too, do we have motion and a second recorded?
We don't. It was a motion and a second to move up the item.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, so then we were at the item on a vote to approve the 2021-22 school reentry plan.
I move to approve.
So motion by Ms. Zanera, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Mosheen, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. That's a clear point. So we will, next item, please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please, Mr. Clark.
The next item is school budget FY '22.
Thank you. And if I may, just a little, I did want to ask Craig now that he's up here, and I mean, we addressed the item, but I think it's good for public information, because it was stated in, on the bids that were awarded, the respondent, the awardee provided a schedule, correct?
Correct.
With penalties, correct?
Correct, yep. So right within the contract that we executed with the vendor, we have dates that we have to meet, particularly for substantial completion, and there are penalties that are associated with that date.
Okay, all right. So, because I think that based on, you know, what was presented, I think that's important to note on the decision that was made.
Yep, and we certainly did, as soon as we received the appeal from that company, we did place a pause on the project. So we're probably going to have to alter some of the dates going forward.
Yeah, I know, but it's different. I'll give Sharon mine at the end.
So thank you. I know I had emailed you all yesterday with an updated version. The budget always remains fluid until the school committee votes on it. So the superintendent and I had an opportunity to meet again today to review the budget, and we made some more changes to it. What happened with the version that I sent you for yesterday, we did make some changes to some grant-funded positions, which did impact the bottom line. But today, we did go in to some of the line items, and we made some reductions. So I just want to outline for you what those three reductions are. So if I go over to page two, within the 55,000 series for the special education out of district placements, Leslie Anderson and I met again today to review the numbers, and that number has continued to be fluid, who moves in, who moves out. So we were able to remove $100,000 from account number 55630 for the private special education Next, within the 56,000 series in the supply line item, we are proposing a reduction of $100,000 in that line item. You can see that year-to-date, as of last week, we were up to $233,000 in that line item. And so when we initially proposed this budget for $375,000, the superintendent feels comfortable that we can make a reduction in $100,000. And if there are supplies that we need, we will make sure that our students and our staff have them, and we can access the Esser funds to supplement that.
Can you give me examples of what a general supply would be that we purchase out of this line item?
So the general supply line items are any supplies that the school needs to run, the pens, the paper, the copy papers, could be.
Prions, it could be manipulatives.
Correct, yep.
It's not furniture?
Nope, that's down below.
I'm just verifying.
Correct.
Not janitorial supplies?
That has a sole line item.
It's just $275,000 worth of pens, paper and coffee?
Well, manipulatives, you know, it might be trade books, it might be things like that, which we can put in Esser funds.
Yeah, could be, that the OT, as the superintendent was saying, the OT could need some theraband, some putty that they need to work with.
Everyone's going to need those little puffer things right now, because, you know.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, and then.
Oh, yeah, I know, you told me, yeah.
And then finally, in line number 57301 for the vehicles, so we decided to make that reduction of $100,000. However, we know that when we do need a vehicle, that we, the school committee could access the capital improvement line item to make that purchase.
So did we find the vehicle that needs the plow on it? Because that was the problem last time. Remember, I said we needed to find another reason if we weren't going to, because I know there's problems with cars. And I'm well aware of that, more than you ever know right now. But remember, I said if we can't get the car, then we need something for a plow to be on front of.
Yeah, we had, the vendor that we spoke with had said that if we were to place a purchase order right now, we were looking probably at about January, January, February, probably the spring.
Okay, so we'll just bring that up on an agenda item next month to figure out how we're going to figure that out.
Yeah, and Tony and I have been in touch with, he's got a couple quotes ready, and so my sort of goal is that once we, once this first payroll goes through, we can look at the rest of the year, because I really would like to get something out of the budget for this year, and to take care of that. The current one, the current fiscal year, not this one.
Is that a used one or a new one that we were talking about? I just refreshed my memory.
So far, that one's new.
It was used that you wanted, okay. I just couldn't remember.
Just as much as the new, just so you all know.
Okay.
Just so you know. I'm still working on this one.
Okay.
So by doing that, if, if you don't utilize this budget cycle, then this next budget cycle, you need a vehicle?
Correct. And, but, again, it could be a purchase, you know, if we had, if there was an emergency purchase, the school committee could say, yep, we want to access the capital improvement line item, and we're going to use those funds to make that purchase.
What's that number exactly now?
So it's about just almost 2.88, 20 million.
Okay.
That's a reserve.
Yeah, correct.
But keep in mind, the facilities repairs and things that we're doing, we're using Esser funds, okay, for that.
So what are the limitations on the capital?
It would have to be, so it'd have to be a capital item, such as the building improvements that we do. A truck would be, would be considered a capital improvement. Could not purchase, say, supplies, copy paper.
Small equipment?
Well, depending on how, I think it would depend upon how.
Is it a dollar threshold or a function?
Would be more of what the function is.
And that's from, those are accumulation of reimbursement?
Throughout the years, correct, yep.
Are we, can I ask one more? Are we doing any more reimbursements? Because I know they come twice.
They come twice. They come in April, and then they come in the fall.
In the fall?
Yep, October.
He doesn't like to tell me, notice. Are we doing any reimbursement?
Yes, so that, so, so the, so the rest, so the projects that have been completed in the past, every, every June is when I have to file the housing aid forms. So those payments are still coming, coming through on some of the projects. As an example, so what happened this past year, if you recall, we did the Riverside Middle School roof, and so that money was going to be coming to us over the course of 10 years. However, due to projects in other portions of the state that were not being done because bonds weren't passed, the Department of Ed was able to reimburse us, actually in the April payment for the, for the full amount. We're not going to get that money over the course of.
So they were using up their budget, because nobody else had tapped in?
10 years, correct. So, but there are still some projects from years, years past that are still coming in. I can't remember off the top of my head what that housing aid reimbursement.
Can you give me approximate number that might be coming in in October?
I will know that. I, I, I will know that after Labor Day. And I happen to know that, because I had asked that question a couple weeks ago, and the school building authority said to me that after Labor Day, we would have that.
But we do have $400,000 that we have to use, the upfront monies.
Correct.
Remember that we have to use by...
Correct.
Which we're putting towards some projects.
Pay-go money, correct.
And the 10 million now, yeah.
So, with, with the pay-go money, we had, there was, there's a little portion of 16 million left. And so, what happens is, again, because the school building authority wanted to see projects being done and not have the districts wait for that money, so as soon as we request the reimbursement, we get the money back, instead of having to submit through housing aid and then wait a year or two or three.
So, so, that being said, with the, with that capital fund and the commitment with regards to the, the high school project and the bond and, you know, the state reimbursement and that requirement for that, you know, five-year capital improvement plan. Pulling, I know it's, it's, you know, small in comparison, but pulling out for a vehicle, again, we're not, like, we've got plenty of wiggle room on there to maintain that, that improvement plan that we submitted.
Correct, yep.
And we're following it.
I'm talking to the guys that, that's on the pro, yeah. Not the one that's shopping down the aisles, I'm talking about the one that's involved with the projects and sees the dollars.
Yeah, that, and that really is, you know, the, the facility strategic plan is something that Tony and I really review quite often, because of what happens. And so, we're always keeping notes, and, but, the, the projects that we have submitted through the Esser grants are all within the strategic plan. So, that's, that's good, because they're one-time projects that we're going to take care of.
Question for you on that, I meant to ask you the other day. When you use an Esser grant fund for some of these projects, do they still qualify for housing aid?
So, that question was posed by one of my colleagues during a weekly phone, phone call. And the answer was, it depends. So, they would really be taking a look at what the project was, what the dollar amount was.
Depends on who makes the call and who they talk to?
Pretty much.
All right.
Worry about nothing.
But, but to that, you know, and I just, I can't say it enough, right? And, you know, just, we kind of, like, really started capitalizing on that housing aid reimbursement. Because we, you know, in the early years, it didn't, you know, we really, we really were not tapping into that. And, you know, we said in the beginning, like, this is going to result in, hey, if we put it right back into capital improvement, we will build that fund and have a revolving door of, of capital improvement fund, and that's where we're at.
Yeah, and your, the reporting that the district has done over the past few years regarding school lunch has been huge, because that has a factor into what our reimbursement rate is. So, that's why every year, we're always saying, please apply, please apply.
Are we still saying that again this year?
So, we are going to be saying that, but also because there could be, there had been some pandemic benefits that are available to people. And so, in order for them to qualify for those benefits from the Department of Human Services, they have to fill out the school lunch application first.
So, yeah, as someone who, who is going to attend all these great openings of schools, you know, all the great events that they have, as a former long-term PTA person, that's when you want to have forms.
Correct, yep.
Because that's when you can get them to fill it out, so...
So, my, my sort of plan was to hit the open houses with a couple of laptops and say, this only takes...
I'm not saying open house, I'm saying they're big extravaganza things that they're at, like the ice cream socials, all that stuff.
Which is taking place next week.
They start next week, yeah. So, I'm just saying, that's, that's, that is a big thing, and that's, if we need this, and you're saying that it definitely benefits us, that's when you want to...
That's, that's how it benefits us.
So, as, as you, you know, kind of always say, like I peel the onion, now I start to think though, right? So, now we've, we've adverti, well, not advertised, but, so you have free breakfast and lunch. So, what's my incentive to fill out a form?
You get ice cream at the ice cream at the big part, I can, there are tons of them, you just tell them, this is what you get.
Yeah, it, it, it helps us.
No, I know it helps us.
I'm sorry, and also, RIDE has, you know, they've already, so for this year, for the determinations for the housing aid, they really, they were holding everyone harmless, because everyone got it free for this past year. More than likely, that's going, that's going to continue forward.
Because, like, I mean, that's the thing, I mean, we, when, when you have to pay for lunch, we chase them to fill out the form.
Right.
So, with the free lunch, and I'm thinking, okay, if they take that into account and it reduces our reimbursement, then for, you know, the next decade, you know, it could, it would result in six figures of dollars, in reimbursement dollars, potentially, if that rate goes down.
Yeah, and really, for us, over, over the summer, it really has been the pandemic EBT cards, because parents were getting more money on those cards. But if they weren't already qualified and hadn't filled out a school lunch application, they had to come to us first, and then the Department of, and then, so our office worked closely with the parents and along with the social workers at DHS. So, it really worked out well. So, we really helped out folks. But that school lunch application really does help the district, because that reimbursement rate is tied into that. So, with that in mind, so with some other reductions that the superintendent and I had, had previous made. So, we are proposing now a budget of $89,844,519. This would require us asking the City of East Providence for an additional $639,639.
You just round that up to 700,000? I did watch the meeting, I'm sorry.
Did watch the meeting, and thank you, Mr. Kahoon, for, he did say, I watched the city council meeting, that, you know, our budget wasn't in yet, so they might want to wait until our budget comes in, so that they had an active, real budget to start working with. Not that any of the other stuff was in, but that ours wasn't in as well, so... And I, you want to talk to the screen, because they were like, well, we don't know when the next meeting is. And I was trying to, like, you know, get someone's attention, it didn't work out, but... So, hopefully, now, now that they know, they can move forward.
Yep, because they moved, moved there wisely, right? The council had said, we want the budget sooner, so that they can review it.
Yeah, they did a great, they had a great workshop stuff that they have happening, I guess. There's quite a few of them, like, all Wednesdays from now until the end of time.
Question on the, on the supplies. We're, we're looking at last year's number 233, which was COVID year, so...
So, but, so the teacher, so the, the teachers were still ordering. The unknown factor has always been copy paper. And so, my hope, and the Director of Technology's hope, has always been that hopefully through the pandemic, that this has helped staff to realize, do I really need to make these copy, do I need to make a copy or, or not? So, that's the only piece that, for us, I think is going to be, we'll have to see how that goes. The, the interesting thing that what we did for this past spring is, there were pallets of copy paper at the old high school. And so, we just, we were Santa Claus, we were bringing copy paper to the, to all of the schools to share that. So, they should all be in pretty good shape, even I have some upstairs still.
I know you weren't here, but I just want to remind, I know that there's people in the audience that are, were here. When I first started on the PTA, long, long time ago, what I bought teachers as a welcome back gift was a case of paper, per teacher, per school, at the school I was in the PTA, because there was no paper. So, if there's any chance that that item does not have enough money, and we are out of paper, I, I, I will not be happy, because it is, it is the number-one thing that, I mean, we didn't use it all last year, and, and, you know, it, people thought COVID was on paper. So, if, if paper becomes a problem, that's the least thing that I want teachers to be worried about, because there are a lot of teachers in this district that remember those days, and, and were told they couldn't get paper, and, and I don't want that to ever happen again.
It won't, it won't.
No, and all of, and I should say too, so, all of the schools ordered their back-to-school supplies back in April, May. So...
So, you have a good...
Yep, this was, this was the first year that the superintendent did not put a freeze. So, all of the principals ordered stuff.
He always blames me for everything. But, you know, in those closets, you were cleaning that high school, we should never order another paperclip in your lifetime. I am telling you, I mean, things like that, thumbtacks, those little things to put, pencils, boxes and boxes and boxes of pencils, that would, right, Tony, I'm not lying. It was incredible how people store things. And as Tony and Craig said, we just dispersed it to the elementary schools, and we had principals come in, because the high school didn't use some of this stuff anymore, and the principals had a heyday, right? The elementary especially, and took almost all of it. But it was incredible what was hidden in those closets.
So, with regards, with regards to paper, and I, I know I brought this up probably a couple years ago, and I know Ben Russell's not here, but... I don't believe we ever implemented, and I don't know why, we don't do code printing. On the, the network printers, you can have a code per employee, so that it doesn't just print on print. And then, if they end up, whether something changes in their day and they didn't need it, or somebody beats them to the machine and throws it out, and they get there and they go, I got to reprint it, because, you know, we can basically, when they go to the print area, punching their code in there, their job will print, because they're ready to receive it. To me, that's a huge waste saving I'm getting there.
Except for when you forget to clear your code out, and then Mrs. Morata goes up, and she uses all my paper, and then it's all on me. Because we had this, we had a code at a district I worked at, and I would, if you forget to clear your code, then now the next five people get to use your code.
Well, that depends on how the, and, and that's, that's a system question for the, for the, for the vendor, right? Because it should, when the job's complete, it should require another code to, to print another job. You know, not, not, I'm not talking about making copies, I'm talking about print jobs that are sent to the network printer, which are the copiers, right? They're sending them down the hall to whatever that's located. And then, when they get to it, which, and I'm, there's no fault in, like, okay, send, print, let me go do what I'm going to do now, in five minutes, I'll go grab that print job. But in that five minutes, someone else may have come and said, this is in the way, moved it, or whatever.
Let's ask Ben and see, let's ask him.
I don't know. It's a simple, it's a simple piece, and I think it's not, I mean, right now, we're talking about to save money. But I've seen it where at least people know that my job's going to print when I, it's going to be there when I go to the machine to get it, because I'm going to watch it come out.
Okay, seriously, look at it, I'll get back to you.
You don't mean like running off like ditto's then, like 50 pages?
No, no, no.
No.
Or like PTA notes or stuff like that, you just, okay.
No, on that one, you can still use Mr. Morata's number.
No, too, and, and Tony, Tony and I can, can certainly speak to the, the voluminous shredding that we did coming out of East Providence High School of copies of everything. I, I mean, it, it was astounding to see the amount of shredding that came out of there. So, that's why, so people can just be a little more aware of that, because...
You should have used the backs of them.
Absolutely, absolutely, so...
Hey, I know one little girl that has a, has a face mask that says graduating class of 2021 now, because there was like five of them left on the floor when it went through, I'm telling you.
Was that?
That's all I have.
Any other questions for, thank, Craig, any questions for Craig?
One question, and I, it's just to confirm, and I'm sure you, Mr. Morey has been told, but athletic supplies this year, we were high, and then we're still low again for next year. I just want to verify.
Correct, so some of that was, had to do with the football, with the uniforms. He got a great deal. We were going to buy half this year and then do the half the next year, and they gave us such a, such a great deal, I just said, get it all now, so this way we don't...
So, were we still on the uniforms going through? The, remember, we were cycling all our uniforms, and I just want to make sure.
Yep, and football was up, yep.
Okay.
Like, the offense was going to look better than the defense.
And on a new turf, you'd imagine.
Yeah, I know, they're not supposed to like each other, but, you know, that'll really drive that.
Sorry, I had to ask her about something.
No, any other questions for Craig, superintendent, or any?
Do you feel comfortable going to the city, asking for this amount of money?
Yeah, I don't, both of you?
Yes, we'll try.
She'll be in front of me, but yes. I'll be standing right beside her.
When, when will you be going for this? Is there...
They usually invite us, I don't know, as soon as, as you approve it, we get it into them on Monday, hopefully on Monday, and...
And you'll let us know so that we can attend?
Absolutely.
Because, yeah, because they have their first meeting with the full budget on Tuesday.
Yes, correct.
Right?
Yep.
But would they be considering us Tuesday?
I, I, I don't think so. I mean, I think usually they kind of, you know...
And they have like, quite a few workshops scheduled.
Yeah.
Not, not meetings to vote, but workshops.
Having no other comments or questions, we'll move on to the next item.
The next item is action item, consider and vote to approve fiscal year '22 school budget.
We have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Tonas.
Second.
Second by Ms. Azanero. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys, for doing the work. Thank you for staying through the budget, I, you know, you didn't have to, Nurse Wallace. And thank you for, for giving us some insight and clarification.
Mr. Montero, I did want to acknowledge her, Diane Wallace, last year, and you can ask Sandy or anyone. She just did, right, Kim, a phenomenal job of contact tracing, calling Rhode Island Department of Health whenever she needed her. I mean, we were getting phone calls 10 and 11 o'clock at night about someone that was positive. Sandy knows that too, on the other end. She just did a wonderful job above and beyond, you know, the call of duty, and I, I really appreciate it. And she, if she didn't get the right answer once, she kept calling them to another person. In fact, they all know her by, on a first-name basis, down at Rideout now. So, I just want to say publicly, thank you so much. If it weren't for her, our records and our contact tracing, I don't know where we would be without her, so, and she's all ready to start this year as well. So, thank you very, very much.
Yeah.
And I have a little something for you.
Go bring it, go bring it to her, I'll bring it to her. Diane.
Yeah. She, she was the on-call nurse for staff, yeah.
Yes. She multitasked very well.
The only nurse my daughter's ever gone to, so that says something all in itself.
Hmm.
Just a little.
Next item, please.
The next item is announcements.
Are there any announcements?
Yes, there is. Tomorrow. At Martin Middle School from nine to one is the Bridgepoint Church back to school. So you can get all your child supplies, so they don't have to wipe them off in between and share, they can get their own. Nine to one, you have to wear a mask inside the school, registration will be taken out outside. There is dental and vision screening, there are games, there'll be really loud car, um Kona trucks and Dells, I think, is there. So please, if you have not registered, register there, we're not, if you're in here, register. Uh elementary schools, all of them. So I just want to make that one more announcement so that people know everything. And I do have another one, if you don't mind.
Please.
Um I'm just going to, and I know people will get to watch us at some point, but I think it's now time to say my name and my phone number, so I'm going to do that. My name is Jessica Boashane. You can reach me at jessica boashane at epschoolsri.com. And my phone number is four zero one eight six two nine zero four nine. So therefore, if you have anything that you would like to speak to me about, you can contact me. I am not the actual first person you should go to, should probably go through the chain of command. And if you're still not happy with that chain of command, then you can reach me. All of our names are on the school website. Um I understand there's a lot of frustration with some things, but if you could please come, you can come to these meetings, I once had a lot of frustration and attended these meetings and was listened to by Mr. Tonus and Mr. Montero prior to me being sitting up here, so I just ask that if you don't know my name, it is Jessica Boashane, my phone number is four zero one eight six two nine zero four nine. And you can call me at any time, I may not get back to you right away, but I will get back to you. May not have the right answer or the answer that you want to hear, but I will do my best. And I think this whole committee feels that way. Uh we are all not on social media, we do not all follow social media uh chats, we don't all belong to groups that other people belong to. But I think that for the benefit of our students and our staff that work their butts off to try to make everything as positive and happy as we can, especially in this pandemic, which is now going into its third year. Uh it is best that you reach out with any problems. So that's my announcement.
Well said, um. Oh, the potentially, the September meetings for both building committee and school committee potentially will be in the new high school. That's going to be dependent upon, we're, we're waiting for a response from Principal Gibbons and his team uh because we do want it to be orderly and secured, um so they're still getting acclimated. So uh again, it's potentially, so if someone wants to throw daggers at me, if if we don't make it there, it's in the interest of of doing it properly. But the um goal, and I know it's something that Miss Boashane has said, you know, we're a school committee and it'd be nice to be in a school setting and we'll have the proper infrastructure, uh network and so forth to communicate appropriately, but um again, we don't want to jump in before they're ready, but that is the goal and it could be uh the September meeting.
And just one more, convocation is September first, I would like to invite the school committee to be in attendance. You'd go into the auditorium door of the new high school, you will be on stage along with my directors, my assistants and my principals. We're doing it, um the high school faculty will be in front of us, distanced. Uh I cannot accommodate the entire district in there this year. The other schools will be watching it from their individual auditoriums and the elementary will be watching it in their schools. I actually am not going to have the principals, I shouldn't say that, they're going to be in their buildings, but I'll have the directors on the stage. So um I'd like to invite you, please be there by about quarter of nine, so we can start promptly at nine o'clock. Of course, we have our video and then we have our surprised appearance. Mr. Montero, you won't be there, but we're gonna zoom you in, correct? Potentially, potentially, so.
Superintendent, probably we can be in our street clothes then.
Yes.
At the the new high school.
Yes, you can in your street clothes.
Yeah, no boots, no vest, no helmet.
No vest.
Yeah, no hard hat.
Someone, someone might have it on, but you don't have it, Mr. Tonus.
Yes.
My surprise this year, but I want to say it in front of my husband.
And and with that being said, I know um. Uh I know Principal Gibbons sent out a communication to uh incoming students, talking about the traffic pattern. Uh the buses are going to drop off at the rear of the building, students entering into the cafeteria rear entrance. And your uh drop off and walkers will go into the main door on the front of the building. Traffic is a one way pattern, entering in the driveway that is closest to PCD. Uh and we'll wrap around and if you look, I see they're already creating that that exit road. So it'll exit on the south end of the, I'm sorry, north end of the property. And nobody's in. Oh, that's separate, okay, either way, you're gonna, you're gonna exit on the north end of the property, whatever, just follow the signs, there'll be plenty of signs. It is a construction site in front of the building and as I stated last meeting, uh it is completely off limits and Gilbane has the authority and duty and expectation to handle anyone that crosses over that line in whatever way they see fit legally. I don't know why I added legally in there, but I just felt, you know, you know, ayo, you know? But uh and no, uh, nobody will be allowed in the building other than students and staff. So and they also, I I did read in there that I think it's October sixth is the scheduled parent teacher night, meet the teacher kind of night, so.
People would get to go in.
Yes.
I think, I don't know.
Yeah.
That would be best.
So just pay attention, yeah.
Just pay attention to it, yeah.
So, alright.
Mr. Montero, before we, um I asked for adjournment, are you saying the school's opening on time?
So if if uh, so listen, do you want, you're gonna give the superintendent, you know, adjourn, but uh the, so yes, barring any thing, I mean, we have a hurricane. Yeah, we have a hurricane coming through Sunday, so um I I'm I'm going on record that the official report from Gilbane and all involved is we are on schedule with the asterisk being Hurricane Henry, as to whether or not
Could hit all schools.
You know, he creates any issue. Uh but they, to their credit, again, for those that may be concerned or asking, um the the entire site, including the demolition site, uh extreme measures have been made and are being made to secure the entire uh piece of property, so. You know, they're professionals and they they do what they do, but yes, we are on schedule for the thirtieth to be in the building and uh have our temporary occupancy be functioning. So I will, uh, anything else? Change a motion?
Make motion.
Motion by Miss Boashane to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Miss Azanero, all in favor.